No, it's a private person.
So do you want him doing it again?
If it's not very difficult, yeah, I didn't.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Looked up that due tax stuff, it's okay as long as you don't lose money.
Yes, that's what they told me.
Oh.
I think it might be in the minutes, if not, we're gonna discuss it.
Yeah. I'm sure you can do that. Free old signs and everything. Free lights? I didn't know that.
Okay, I can't get this to work right, so we're gonna record on those. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. It is six thirty-three. Okay, uh, roll call. Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yep.
Martha? Linda?
Yes.
So the first thing on there is the approval of the past minutes, and I think with the exception of Linda, everyone got theirs ahead of time, so yours is there in front of you.
Alright.
Um, let me ask a question real quick. There's been some, a little confusion on if these need to be hand-delivered, or emailed, or left here. So does anyone know, and or do you have clarification?
Right here on table.
And is that sufficient though? Cause some, not everyone has keys.
That's what I did for the last three years.
I think there's only two people that have keys that's on the board.
Left on table, whatever, pick them up and read them and whatever.
Well, I don't think we have enough keys. So, we might have to look into that. Um, I know they were hand-delivered at one time, and then Stacy had been emailing them, is that correct?
Yes.
Emailed.
Yeah. Well, the people that had email got them emailed.
Oh, I don't need all of it.
Okay, well then we'll try to look into that and see what, uh, cause the ordinance doesn't really say which way we're supposed to do them, and I just wanna make sure it's done correctly. So I'll give you guys, I'll give Linda a minute to catch up on the minutes. Is there, was there any mistakes in the minutes that we need to correct, that anyone saw?
Are these to be taken home?
Um, yeah, I think you guys always kept your copies right. Yeah, that's the copy of the audit.
Cause I'm gonna have to have five years to read this.
Yeah, they're not fun. From what I've read, and then we have one with, I just gave one to Trevor, he's gonna look over, and then our guy that does our taxes monthly, you know, our accountant that does that, um, he hasn't seen anything either, but he's got a copy to look through. And it really doesn't say there's anything, I don't see anything that says gross negligence, you know, so, everything seems to be okay. So the ones that have minutes, did you see anything? Is that an error, okay, or that we need to correct?
You have your minutes with you?
Pardon?
You have your minutes?
Oh man.
Your minutes?
I've got them now.
Need a little reminder?
I read them yet. I've been sitting down night, reading them now midnight. Or reading that little white book. Oh, I do. Oh, I can't see.
Linda, just let me know when you're done with the minutes.
I'm done with the minutes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to pass the minutes, or is there any corrections that we need to make?
Motion to pass.
If everybody's fine, but.
Okay, I went ahead and passed out the treasurer's report on that, um, and everybody has their copy. Here are the original. I'll give you all a minute to look over that. Oh, yeah, I did put in there, hey, Paul?
Pardon?
That part we talked about, that you were asking me about last meeting, if they were allowed to put the...
Yeah, I'll read it to them.
Right, okay, well, I wanted to make sure that we double-checked with Nita also.
Oh, okay.
And she said as long, like you said, as long as we weren't losing money.
Well, you don't lose it.
Yeah.
And that goes a lot more stuff than just more.
And she said, well, we don't have anything where we're losing money.
No, we got light poles, great signs.
Well, I meant like where we have our money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in the bank.
We could use it for a lot more than just roads.
So... But, yeah, but the end of it is, they have to tell us where we can use it. We're gonna be, hopefully looking at that.
Long as it comes out the bar.
Has everybody got a chance to look at the treasurer's report?
No, not yet.
Okay.
You didn't get no change before.
That's right.
Almost done driving again. I'm gonna put this bird in the fire one more, so just so I can flush the turmoil. Hold on, John.
Yeah, how good, thanks sir.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Let your worst fall off.
Sorry, happened.
Another can of water, scout.
You should look at this one, or this one? Sure.
This is a what?
It's a lemon. Well, they told us that they had ordered six eighteen. Hey, Paul, do you know which book you have at home?
Pardon?
Do you have this book, or this book?
I got the... What's the difference?
One's eleven and one's... You have eighteen?
Yeah.
And John, you said you have eleven though. Linda, you know what you have? Leon, did you get a book last night?
No, I haven't.
Okay, Martha, you got that, both of them, right, the ordinance and...
Same thing, ain't it?
There's different ages. I'm just trying to figure what we have.
I should've got the latest one.
I'm just waiting on the other side of the table to get through the treasurer's report.
What's the word for that?
Well, Linda's got it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, 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 we're just waiting, that's why I'm waiting patiently.
Is that my boss? Is that Sean back here?
I know he's pretty far away.
Yeah. Oil still there, dude? I didn't check the pantry, chicken. Well, no. I had to, other stuff, I know. But I'm doing very close. Oh, dude? There is a one that somebody's... Say it. There is a one, Jason Johnson. It's late too. It's late.
Mister Sawyer, how's life treating you?
Busy.
Haven't seen you for a long time.
Back around after a...
Yeah.
Long hiatus. Happy to be here.
Good, good, good.
Happy to have you.
Small town USA.
Yes, I am.
Get out in the world, you realize it's not so bad as back home, is it?
It isn't. Lot more food out there in other places, but, uh, aside from that, it's nice being back.
Yeah, good, good, good.
How's your dad, is it your dad?
Yep.
Steve, yeah?
My dad's Steve, yes, he's doing well.
Is he?
We've started practicing together in Mount Carmel.
Oh, really?
Yep, we have an office at the Skiles Building, and it's taking off pretty well, so...
Well, my, that's good.
It is.
That's good. He's a good man, he's...
I appreciate that. I'm lucky to have him as a... influence and a role model.
I've never had to use him in court, thank God for that. But I've known him as a friend for a long, long time, but, uh... Yeah, he's a good man.
Big shoes to fill.
You know, can I ask something about this? I'm gonna lose friends here, I'm sure. There ought to be a way to speed this up. I mean, we looked through that, how you gonna tell? How you gonna tell? What you're, what you're looking at? I mean, you can tell if the numbers add up unless you take a calculator and go through all that crap, but, uh... We sat here for thirty, forty-five minutes and looked through it, and what, I couldn't... recite anything to you on that, other than the title of the paper.
Right.
And her format's changed tonight, too.
Yeah. And I'm just saying, there ought to be a way we could expedite this thing a little bit, you know?
Do you have any suggestions, cause I'm new to that, too?
I lose, uh, my attention span's not very... anymore. And, uh, we sat here and, and looked through that, no, do I have any suggestions? Not at this very moment, but, uh, I probably will have them.
I agree.
Okay, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, I agree.
Board meetings, and a lot of these other people have been in board meetings, we sat here for thirty, forty-five minutes.
They could shorten it.
Yeah, but Bud, hi... If you shorten it to two pages.
Yeah.
How you gonna know what you're looking at if you don't know what you're looking at?
You don't know.
I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
You don't, unless you're a...
Well, well, not only that, it's not that complicated to have a guy with a degree, but you gotta have a calculator, you gotta have time to sit down there and look at this, and then you gotta have something to compare it to. Whether it's up or down, or... Now, if it's extravagant, then it's gonna show up.
I can read, not make heads out of it.
It's gonna show up.
No, I can read.
And you can rest assured, that the people that do the math on this thing... is right.
Well, that's what I mean, what, what sign it, if it's already been approved.
Do they do it differently at other board meetings than at...
I don't know.
Or have they in the past?
I don't know.
Oh, they're always passing around.
We spend thirty, forty-five minutes looking at it, don't know if I can tell you what it's... You gotta have a calculator or something to compare it to, in order to say, this is not right. And unless it's an extravagant number... If something goes up several thousand dollars, or down several thousand dollars, then you can say, hey, what, what happened there? Most of us would know if something happened, unless it's an addition or subtraction number of some kind.
Well, I wonder if I could talk to some of the other villages around here, or towns, on how they do that? You know, that would make it...
Maybe, maybe so, I don't know.
You know, maybe a little easier, cause I don't...
This is a suggestion, like it could, we need to speed the thing up a little bit, not that I have anything...
Right, yeah, I understand, it's... a lot of papers to look at, so...
Really tries my, uh, attention span.
Well, you know, that you mentioned that, um, I have been at a couple of meetings where the one financial advisor just speaks and tells an overview of what's all on there.
Yeah.
And he, we don't look at it individually.
Yeah.
He just kinda explains, you know, this up and down, what's going on, and move on.
We had a lady at Pacific that would do that, she would, uh, whenever we had a production meeting stuff, she would look through that, she'd say, well... maintenance is way out of whack here, so this is, and this is why, and we'd know, we were, we would already know. Because the machine was down, or something was... But otherwise... We'll give that some thought, I mean, I don't know.
Is there any way to get that paper before a meeting, like a copy of it, or pass it around, that way we could look at it before we come through?
See, I don't know, because I was always told that this paperwork right here is not to leave the office.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, if you guys took it and someone accidentally got it.
Right, yeah. Okay.
But like I'm saying, you, you can't tell unless you got something to compare it to.
Right.
Yeah.
Watch the numbers. Are you, I saw your person?
I am.
Is Steve in relation to you?
Yeah, I heard your review of him when I was watching the old uh tapes, so yeah.
Is he in relation to you?
Certainly is, that's my dad, yeah.
I won't hold against you.
Well, I already heard how you feel, so no worries there.
He was your, was your dad?
Yeah, that's my father.
He was married to Wyatt Kelly's daughter at one time.
Yes, sir.
I had a conflict with him.
Yeah.
We had a long session.
Kelly asked how you're talking about him. But that is my dad, so I appreciate not being rude.
I did care for him a bit.
But that's still my father.
It goes back a long way, me and him, it was
Yeah.
End of conversation. It ain't your fault, I said, I don't hold against you.
I don't really care if you hold against me or not, but yeah.
Like with my dad, there were almost half a love it.
Are you done with those, Bud?
Just plus the numbers and me, Christine.
Um, there were two other papers, let me see if they're in there, cause last time they got misplaced out of there. Yeah, it's the one that, it's the one that you guys keep, but last time it got misplaced out of here and I had to get new originals, so I wanted to make sure it was in that stack.
It takes me five years to go through this. That's why now, I see things backwards, I got no business reading. Well, I got this already.
No, unless you've paid that one. I'm just saying.
There's a note on the other side that says Okay, that's the one that I need back with that, and you have a copy in there.
Okay, I'd say definitely.
Can I ask something?
Want this back?
Yes, those are the ones that we have to keep on file here.
What about this, you want this back?
Yes, that's the, yeah, that's the one that we're missing. Anybody have any questions on that, other than what Leon addressed and will, yeah, thanks. And I'll check with some villages and some other towns on how they handle that. You know, it's a good idea, cause yeah, I just feel like sitting here.
Just expedite, just expedite the thing.
Yes.
I agree. Other inputs would be awesome, from other towns, so.
Okay, do we have a motion to pass the treasury report?
I don't know, sir.
Second. The bills are going around now, and then we'll look into that.
Who'd your dad ever married? Your mother?
Brenda Cogdill from Lawrenceville.
Brenda?
Yep.
I didn't know.
Yep.
Oh, I know that he married that Kelly girl, whatever her name is.
Chris.
Who?
Chris.
Was her name Chris? I seen her.
Hey, did you get your paperwork the other day?
I walked her away, it's been a year. She's a little woman back there, though. Oh, I didn't think of it.
Hey, Paul, did you get your paperwork the other day? Did you get some of your paperwork the other day?
My paperwork.
Yeah, your agenda and stuff. I delivered it, too.
My paperwork.
Your agenda and your minutes and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I got that at home.
Okay, I'll make sure you got them, I delivered them to you the other day, you know?
I'm not sure if football's here or not.
Yeah. Yeah.
I probably go to your house the other day and look at that little white book. I've read it two or three times. I spent my head of tails out there, but too much of a jibbered double talk.
Yes, I got it, cause I was in a living room.
It's on page one eighty-three, I think, I was wanting to look at it or something, I got it marked off.
What's it about?
Conducting the meeting after president resigns or quits.
Oh, okay.
Who takes over?
Oh, okay.
If you're ready, yeah.
I guess thousand eleven.
Did you initial my?
No.
Like I said, I tried to read it, about three or four pages in there.
I didn't make sure you got those papers.
Yeah, I've been, I've been trying to study that, trying to get my magnifying glass out.
It's a good book to read.
I ain't, no, I ain't folks to read, I guess. Miss Adams was telling me I couldn't read either. Ask Leon about Miss Adams, I can't read.
Yeah.
She told me that.
She was a good lady.
Yeah, I read a sentence to her once, a paragraph, and she says, what are you looking at? I'll read it again, she says, what are you looking at? She says, you're putting stuff where it ain't there, and you're reading it backwards. I am. That's when I had the flex here.
Oh, really?
I wasn't that stupid, I just couldn't read.
Oh, bud.
And I still got it.
That was when we had two classes in one room.
Pardon?
That was when we had two classes in one room.
Yeah, we had, yeah.
Seventh and eighth grade in the same room?
With the sixth, seventh, eighth, and just seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth.
Okay.
Now they, their hair's going, they'd get on fire if they did that.
Oh, the sixth grade was across the room, wasn't it?
These kids are gonna be
Sixth grade was across the north side.
I was on the road down there by your house, or the firehouse.
Oh, what was that sire going on?
Oh, it's a, I think like storm, yeah.
Storm sire?
First, second, Tuesday, Thursday, go off.
Oh, it was loud as loud. I live across three mile louds.
Well, we got, we got the fire siren at the fire station, then we got storm sire. I live a block away from um, on the corner across from White Stoneburgers. And that little house. I can't remember, whose old house it was. Kenny Dunn's.
You can go to these side of the rock and the church.
I think it'll be a heavy every time you try to look in there.
That was when we had businesses there.
Yeah. Well, hopefully. Somehow, somehow.
The one in Fort Branch is eighty-three.
Actually, it was pretty good, because if you need a bunker or
I go in in the middle of the week, it's like At the VSW.
They got that Queens boardroom.
Yeah, that's the, I think it's gonna be fifty-eight.
Yeah, we had three grocery stores and a restaurant.
Something like that.
Yeah.
There was one guy that was threw out there because
Yeah, he bought four hundred dollars worth of tickets. Couldn't understand what he didn't win.
Boy, I could think of somewhere else to spend four hundred dollars.
Something going to buy one winner.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Yeah, I only get five.
Were you babysitting or?
What'd you ask me about?
There was a dent store, there was so good.
Was there a little shop next to that?
Is that who it is?
Yeah, I go in a couple days a week and help you out.
Hardware store, they were like, they sold, only sold tractor to music. And right next to that were Brad Walling's shop, but it used to be a grocery store there.
Almost lost my kidneys.
Carter's.
Oh, really?
One far in here. Yeah, it used to be Carter's Grocery Store.
Carter's, that's what it was, oh, yeah, okay.
Cliff lived up here next to him.
She almost lost.
And Bud lived right behind it.
You lost it, this was not too long ago.
About a year ago, yeah.
Used to have a restaurant right there.
Will it be a year and fifteen?
No, it was a year, yeah.
Next to the grocery store right there, there's nothing down there, it's made of concrete.
And
He is, he is the restaurant.
He was okay, and then it came back.
What's he?
It went to her brain.
I'm just a young'un.
Yeah, yeah, well, your hair might be a little bit tinned there.
Yeah, and all my family's in it.
Yeah, my mother used to work down here at Carter's Grocery Store.
I can't afford to move down there, without the house.
I lived down here on the corner where Mike lives.
He's around, eight hundred, nine hundred dollars.
In fact, I got married during that, not in the house, but I was living there when I got married. You don't remember that either? Cause I've been married longer, you don't know.
Brad owns it. We're a very long time, too.
Remember the Tally Hotel?
That was your sister's hotel?
Where Smith's house was built. Remember that big three store building?
They had picked it up like twenty-five years ago.
I don't remember that.
No, more like thirty.
Yeah, I was in it. Had a state coal cow back.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't remember that.
Old man Tally took me through there.
My sister bought that trailer.
Every room had a fireplace. He gave me a bunch of flat rates. You don't remember, huh? Why every day to school?
Well, it might've been called something different, I don't know, but
Well, that's the Mrs. Three Store took out for half a block.
It was there where Mary Sloss lived?
Yeah, that's where Sloss lived, that's where, that's where these, the Hall, Smil, Schmidt built that new home.
Yeah, it is.
They tore down the hotel. Or somebody did. It goes back I'm probably eight years old when I walked through there.
Yes, I do.
My father-in-law in that house where Mary Sloss lives now.
Yeah, who lived there?
Father-in-law, mother-in-law. That house wasn't very old when they bought it.
Father-in-law there, yeah? I remember him living next, called the church.
He lived up that front end, Larry Sloss.
I bought the church.
Well, there he lives.
Was he in town or out of Gateway?
Yeah, I remember the
Out of Gateway, but I think she's in the
Yeah, I bet it.
Oh, wait, is she?
Whatever, David and Reuben and
Yeah, my best friend's in Ickell, she knows
They lived across the street, in the, used to be a little parsonage.
Yeah.
Where uh
Had the other
What's his name?
Where the Drake driver was at, I don't know his name. Where Compton lived. Oh, I suppose, lived there with Compton, I think.
Back when I married my wife, she lived in that house.
Yeah, she lived there.
Well, that was the parsonage to the first church.
Yes.
No, I hardly recollect Mike very well. I used to live in there one time. Brother Mike?
Did you?
I hardly recollect him. I mean, David's the same age, Reuben's ahead of him, he's your age, ain't he? You live across from Christian Church. I used to live in that house.
Always going back to the old
And it was the church parsonage at one time.
It's the fees of the bills, so once they get approved, that will
What you look at financial side, you know, you'll get the monthly bills. So if there's any ones that popped in there that shouldn't have been, that you didn't know about. Getting my YouTube games or anything, working, talking to the I can't find my um, Jolly Avengers that I had last time.
My son-in-law went out here a couple weeks ago.
You read that book.
Trevor, I tell you, we appreciate you for that.
I just
Feels good, we appreciate it. Yep.
Every time I heard that, we couldn't see anything.
Sure, I heard something like that.
So we had got a couple pegboards so he put a pegboard up over the back door.
Yeah.
Put a storm window in over the window and he would put the pegboard in. But when he went to move that table, he was screaming like a little girl, jumped up on the lawn mower, there's about, there was a black snake about eight foot long that come out behind that table, along with like four little ones.
I am terrified of those things, if you kill them.
He jumped up on the lawn mower.
Did you see where it went?
It went out of the garage, and I told him, I said, they, I bet they come back. I haven't heard them, but I bet they come back.
And that's during the wintertime, isn't it?
Yeah.
Gorgeous.
And he, he said, yeah, he's just coming. Then I went, oh my gosh.
That thing's terrifying.
Oh, me too.
I can't even watch them on TV or look at them in magazine.
I can't even watch them on Facebook.
Oh, I can't either.
Thought I'd let you know.
I'm a per, I'm a per I'm a morning person.
I guess, so, but I'm never somewhere early. I always click hide that post.
Not meetings, not church, I clock in on time, but I'll be logging in, but it's too late.
I'm just not, I don't know.
I always hated it late, I'd really not even go in when I was looking.
I thought that was fine.
I just, I just
I'm gonna be late again, I'm getting calls and
Who, Josh and Kevin? Oh, yeah, I talk to him every day.
What are you doing?
Josh went to the neurologist yesterday.
Man, I got a text.
He doesn't think he's having a seat, he should
Remind her.
See, but I wanted to, every time he had one of those attacks, I'd be checking that.
I don't know who puts it on, did you put that on the board out here? That's good, cause that reminds me that it
Board meeting, town hall meeting, what do you want?
That's good, that's good.
Just board.
You're doing good.
Chris Taylor had to remind you.
What, Allen Crowder?
So his Medicare checks in March.
As long as I've been down there for one time.
And the doctor said, it was a power break, I've been related to her. She don't, I mean, it's not like she does it on purpose.
I remember that time you were back on, bye-bye. My truck ain't there, I'll be fishing.
Yeah.
That's in my truck there.
But she's gonna get tagged off on it, being just.
I think I might have it this way.
So.
Well, some bright early December, but it did. Flowers up.
Had the heat cup, she was just, Peter says she was disrupted.
Sometimes people.
We're down to haul and get you your hair. How far is that?
We gotta get a haul, haul pass, go up hauler.
Now, go to the office now to get haul.
So you're in haul.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what did he, he gets the haul and he gets the pass or what?
I made it to the office, I could've been to the bathroom back already.
He told me he'd been pretty good though.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a fly, you know, like this. Yep.
Anyway. She's a pretty good kid, I understand, that's going on. Don't have any trouble at church. She's getting to the age where she's gonna have to learn that, if I go in that class, I can't do this. If I go in that class, I better not do that. Learn how to tick-toe through that class. Again, I don't know. I wonder if we ever had one of those. She does talk about, she talks.
See a lot of fishing?
Yeah.
She loves to make fishing.
Yeah, I try not to see them at all.
I'm not an.
Don't give a where you're at.
I would've died very pioneer days, because there's nothing afterwards, nothing.
Is it an emergency?
I don't know, I think, I don't know.
I'm okay though, don't see him, I don't see him.
I mean, cause I don't flash.
She's gonna get herself. She, she, she talks. She talks.
Her parents don't wanna screw up.
Yeah. But on Facebook, which I would do.
Sounds like a chat.
Yeah.
It's really fishy.
Kind of demeanor he has when he goes up there.
Only thirty dollars last month.
Now, I have to make those bills out, those are the ones I make out, but you guys have to approve them before they get sent out in the mail. That's why you look at them to make sure you do trust me before they go in the mail. So they don't get mailed until tomorrow after the meeting. For tonight. I can leave, I can leave.
No, 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 no.
He was saying. I'm not being, you know, you're just like them.
He was just saying, if I have to go through those and that you guys don't trust me, then why am I back there? And I said, you guys have to approve it before they go out, and then someone else has to sign it.
Oh.
Sorry.
So now it's your turn to look at them and sign them.
Yeah, I'll be at one five.
He did partially look.
Yeah.
Sorry.
There you go.
I'll take a glass or. But you already got it, what's this?
Well, they're, they're not mailed out, they're right here, ready to go.
Well, I mean, if.
All that, they're right there.
You already went through it.
Well, because the one time you guys caught that the insurance claim was supposed to be, or that claim for our electric was supposed to be filed with the insurance.
It's a monthly bill. It's a monthly bill.
Yes.
I said, you always write monthly, cause that's more, four point seven odd a month, or half hour.
Yeah, they have, EPA got their guidelines.
I know, I gotta have it, but is there somewhere any cheaper around?
No. Most places are a lot higher than this.
Are they? It's gone. Would you have had the, would have had wages? But it don't. I don't play it, I don't, I don't have no water needs, well, needs. Uh-huh, red notes.
No, well, my dollar one.
Yeah, we don't get chlorine very often, how often do we have to?
What chlorine?
Yeah, it's called the snow, snow glow bleach or something like that.
Three months, is it every three months?
Every three months, so it is a big chunk of change, but it's only every three months that we get it.
Life bills.
Chlorine is nasty stuff.
I watch.
If people knew what goes through town here on that railroad.
Oh, yeah. Be scattered in that.
I'm telling you. I do have a big old rack and have about four or five cars of chlorine.
That could be nuclear warheads.
We're under cover.
Yeah.
We talk about it all the time with the fire department, oh, shoot, you're trained about it.
They don't go slow either.
Supposed to have a speed limit when they go through, just like cars do on the highway.
Thirty-five.
I'm not sure what it is.
I bet they don't go that speed limit.
What's railroad? Thirty-five at a town. In, out, it's a Class A track, they can run up to seventy miles an hour out here. Out of, that's, out of, out of town. To town. Oh, to town. We're town again, we're town again, huh? Good railroad people coming here, we've talked to them before.
Wow.
I know they run a pretty good clip through here.
Yeah, they do.
Sometimes.
I just remember the two you rounded for three weeks, remember that? Wondering the seven, eight, moving.
Cause they come in here, they'll come in about every two years and try to close their streets. And when they do, you wanna tell them no, cause they wanna close all of them but one. We ain't closing none of them, no. I've been through that before, no. Cause fire, fire trucks and ambulance. Yeah. Yeah.
You mean close them for maintenance or disclose them permanently?
Close them permanently.
Or they're just one street?
They'll close them permanently, they'll buy one of those and close them down.
They tried to close them, when they come in here that time, they wanted to close them all but one, no way.
That, when that one got sold up there by Bill.
Yeah, one of the first closed.
Mm-hmm, but I mean, that's when it happened, they ended that.
No way. I guess they didn't know, I wasn't on the, that was back when I was on the boards and stuff. Cause you can't afford to close any of the streets, they wanna close them permanently and they don't wanna maintain them. No, that's.
No, I, I. I believe that. Well, that's it.
Bruce, he's already approved it.
I haven't sent anything out, so I have not approved anything. Okay, so, when we get a motion to pass the, approve the bill.
Oh, motion.
Can I get a second?
My second.
I don't, it was in there, it wasn't in there.
All right, uh, Bill, would you like to talk about the water report?
Well, we've been raising the meters and checking the chlorine, uh, working on the tractors. We've had trouble with the little tractor. Somebody in the past. Put the drain plug in, stripped the threads. So I went to Herschel Johnson's, got the plug that goes in the tractor, and it leaked. So I went down to BJ Napa, talked to him, and he sold us a universal plug that fixed it, so. We can keep this one because it was kind of expensive. And they didn't tell, they didn't tell us at the time, it was thirty dollars, while we went to Napa.
Oh. The oil ran, right?
Yeah, see, they stripped.
He, uh, he.
Somebody in the past put it inside, stripped the threads. So the new one wouldn't work either, so we had to buy a universal plug.
Yeah.
Well, it did, it had a little arm that went up into the pan, and as you tighten it.
Yeah.
It had rubber and it sealed it, so.
Well, who does that? I never touched it.
It's probably been a long time ago, you know.
That's a little fish.
It can happen to anybody, I mean, you know, you think it's going right, and then you put a wrench on it.
Yeah. That's, no, that's his fine fridge, I went.
Yeah.
So, does it now?
Yes, we got it now.
We already bought that.
But the expensive one, we can use on the big tractor if we need it, so we're not gonna be out much.
Can't chase the threads?
It costs too much.
I bet you ain't got a tap to do it, huh?
You know, BJ found one, they fit it for twelve dollars and we don't have to worry about mowing this summer and leaking oil, you know. It's worth, it'll be, stay, you know, twelve dollars, what we spent is a lot cheaper than a new mower.
Prevent a make, another words.
If your oil light isn't working, you lose all your oil, you lose your motor, so.
Yeah.
We have a Hustler zero-turn mower in the pole barn, that looks like a pile of junk. I showed Jonathan.
Yeah.
It still has the price tag on it, how much was that, was that forty-six hundred?
About fifty-three hundred.
Fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-four hundred, it still has the, I think we oughta have Real King come and get it and see what's wrong with it. Because it don't look that bad, does it, John?
No, it really don't.
I think it'd be worth it, I mean, it may just be a starter or solenoid, I think it'd be worth.
Had a little TLC to it, I think it'd be worth.
Yeah, we don't know who parked it there, it's got two flat tires, it doesn't have a battery, it won't start. I took the battery out of Toro, put in it, and it wouldn't start, so. We know it's not the battery.
But it would turn over if something froze up.
No, it wouldn't turn over or nothing, so it's either the switch, solenoid, or starter, so. If you wanna have Real King look at it, I mean.
They gotta have.
Eh, eh, one of our old ones.
We had the Toro, it runs.
About one of our old ones?
Yeah, it's a, it's a Hustler.
The one that belongs to us?
Yes.
It's not propane, is it?
No.
It won't start.
Nope. Got two flat tires.
One out back, that little one?
Well, does Mike Burbright still work on here in town, I mean, he did last summer, he's still working on? But I don't, I don't know.
They've been used for years.
Decision not making a decision now, or it's like to be.
That was sixteen.
Sixteen, it should still be good.
Now, that's, I was the last one to get out and mow it. I like it.
I mean, uh, it might be worth looking into, because five thousand dollars is a lot of money for a new, new.
Oh, I, nah, I think.
I, I.
If it's fifty dollars, if it's fifty dollars starter, I mean, we'd have a backup mower.
Well, the Big was still running, don't it?
Big one's still running, it needs an oil change.
Yeah, maintenance.
But I think I had a filter for it, so. It's got a flat tire too, but I can plug it.
That's been set back there, Bill, for three years.
Do you think we have a little time, however we can discuss it, but we can get it in before everybody else gets their stuff?
Yeah.
We can put that back on the agenda for next month, you got a good idea?
Well, we don't wanna wait too long, because everybody'll be taking their mowers and getting fixed, I mean, now's the time to get a mower worked on before everybody. It's up to you, I mean.
Sounds like everybody else will look at it and we'll get for it.
Approve something, it's on the agenda.
But then we get.
No, a safety switch, is it?
No.
Like I said, it was, I ran it sixteen, only yard.
Oh, sixteen?
Yeah, I think it was twenty sixteen, whatever it was. I broke it out, aired the tires up, been back and setting them for.
Yeah.
Boy, that big was squirrely.
She might've had a pretty good idea, getting Mike, I don't know what kind of standing he's got with the drive here, but. Oh, he'd be cheaper than Real King, maybe, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, it, it probably came from Real King. Did that come from Real King? Yes.
Well, he's got, they got parts.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can look at it here in town.
Yeah, I do not, it's simple, you know, you know how that is, I mean.
Everything good?
Yeah, everything's good, chlorine level's good, uh.
And Sanders was down today, right?
Pardon me?
Were, were you here in Sanders' team, I heard they were supposed to be in town today.
Uh, no, I, I, she didn't call me or anything.
Okay.
Everybody's watering.
And I checked it, it was, uh, the chlorine was one point one, so. She checked it, if, if it'd been lower than that, she'd have called, you know.
Okay, we'll open the floor to public comments in regards to what's on the agenda.
Public comments open, if anybody'd like to speak.
I don't know what we were talking about a minute ago.
Oh, he's talking about your, uh, paperwork a while ago, trying to do it a little faster. Could a guy like, what, like motor fuel tax, everything, like you spend on motor fuel tax, put it in that. Like on one sheet, everything you spend. You know what I'm trying to say? You know, and then your next one, like your, all your bills, put it on it, on the next paper, like your, what is it? Motor, the motor fuel, and then what's next on there? Each one of them, category them to where all your bills go on it, to where you can, what you got, then what you spent, and plus all your bills on one paper.
Kinda like our treasury report, but with the bills on it also.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
In other words, category everything out, like your motor fuel, your gas, or your garage. Everything you spend, put it on one, then add it, then what you spent, or comes out to. I know it's a lot of paperwork to do, but it might be a little quicker.
Well, they have everything. It's categorized, like, like this is for one account and this is for another, so they have that wrote down.
All your bills on it too?
He, yeah, he writes them, he types them in there.
Okay.
Anything else?
Have you guys discussed about what you're gonna do with that tree beside the house?
Um, yeah, but for the record, I need you to stand and state your name, I'm sorry, I didn't have them do that.
Well, in a short, I was questioning about that big tree that's on city property, keeps losing limbs.
Bill had told us that it was still budding.
It's alive, that tree's alive.
You don't want my opinion then, sir, because that tree.
That tree does not bud, ma'am, I mean, that tree, I'll tell you what happened to that tree, it's just like a lot of maple trees. Probably last February, it got warm, started budding, then it got real cold, the buds fell off, so you didn't have many leaves last summer, is probably what happened.
It is losing limbs.
If you all wouldn't have drove nine nails in it with the no trespassing sign, it might've been what, hurt it.
That's, that's.
We're gonna keep an eye on that tree and.
I can have it cut down, but you guys are gonna pay for it, that's just by my, you know.
Nah, dead, it's not dead. Nah, dead, it's not dead.
Because, because if it falls on the house, because I'd been told by a tree person, if the wind blows just right, it's coming over on our house. You guys can pay for the house, that's fine and good with me, you know.
I don't know. I know it's not dead.
May I add, add something on that? Would it hurt the board to get an arborist out to check that tree? Get a trained arborist to look at it?
I had year-round service to look at it, and he said if that tree goes down, it's going right on the house.
I, I'm trying to help you also, but let the board decide if they bring in their own arborist to check. What would be best for everyone involved?
I think personally, we can get a second opinion from, uh, from someone and look at it. Somebody professional.
Like I said, year-round was out here and looked at it.
Right.
And the top of the tree inside the fence buds out, has its leaves too, but half of it's still dead, you know, and the same way with the front end. It buds out, but half of it still dead, and limbs fall down. If you got a vehicle there, the limbs fall on them. You can't walk on the sidewalk because there's limbs all over the sidewalk where branches are.
What's the intersection there, Miss Short?
Hackberry and Persimmons. When Bill come over to look at it, he stopped in front of the house. He was at the trailer where the shooting was a couple of years ago, over there. We don't live there, we live across.
I would do your tree, it's just.
Hackberry and Persimmons, yeah.
That's right across from church.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's got maple right there on, on the city property.
No trespassing sign they nailed on it. Nine nails.
That, that, that's my personal opinion. I don't know about the whole board, but we'll talk about it some more.
Like I said, year-round come out and checked it out. I hadn't had, I had another company come out.
They're in the bin with the checking trees. Might need topped. Top it.
Might be.
I'm just waiting for a big storm to come through and it land.
No, nobody wants it on your house, that's for sure. They can ruin the house in a hurry.
Cut in church?
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say.
It's got her made, you've got interest.
Better to be city because it's city tree. City has paper now. And on the paperwork in that.
The paperwork for what?
Like, the start of the meeting, why don't you guys do it, come in a little ahead of time and do it, or just have one person to read it all, you know? Cause when you guys go through it, none of us back here know what bills are being paid or anything, you know? We're, we're still in the dark with everything.
Well, you don't really, I hate, I don't, I don't mean sound. Don't get upset. But you don't need to know the bills that they're paying. You just need to know that she's paying the bills. Because if they don't pay the bills, then Real King's gonna shut us off, or John Deere, whoever we don't pay, they're gonna say, you, no more. So, uh, we just go through and make sure that they're not extravagant, and there's not a duplicate of this bill and that bill, and just kind of oversight on, on the bills, you know? But, uh. You understand what I'm telling you? You don't, you, and that sounds really kinda bad. You really don't need to know the whole, the bill. I mean, we're not gonna steal the, all the bills, we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna do that. We just gotta be sure that there's an oversight on the bills that we pay.
Make sure they ain't double billed, mistake, stuff like that.
If something happens, back to your tree, if something happens, we got a lawyer sitting up here. Something happens and it's the city's fault and it's on the city, I'll guarantee you, the city's liable. I'm just telling you, the city's liable.
If it's an act of God, though, I don't know about that.
Oh. I don't know, I'm not gonna say here, but I'm just telling you, if something happens, that's just like a, just like a swimming pool in your stupid yard. Or somebody walks across your yard, you got a hole in your yard. You fell in that hole, you know who's gonna pay the bill?
God, it's an act of God.
No, you're gonna pay the bill. You own the property. God ain't gonna pay nothing.
You might call me up though.
You can call him up, and that's gonna be down.
No, he might call me up.
But I'm just telling you.
Oh, yeah.
Uh. It's just like, well, like if you're driving the tractor down the street, and you lose control of it, you run into somebody's house and knock the windows out and stuff like that, you know who's liable?
Yeah. Yeah, city.
I'm just, it's, it's an ugly story, but it's true. It's true.
Yeah.
Now, if you got kids, you know, nobody wants to get anybody hurt. We don't want the tree to fall and hurt somebody, or God forbid kill somebody. That would be a bad, that would be a really bad deal. And, uh. But like, I don't say we, we could get somebody to take a look at it and see if it's unsafe.
Yeah.
It's to our benefit to get the thing fixed, and it's to your benefit to see that we get it fixed, so.
Get a second opinion, huh?
Right. Who am I? I'm, I'm not an arborist, I mean.
Right, yeah.
No, I'm not.
Tree doctor.
Tree dick.
Tree hugger maybe, but I'm a tree hugger.
What's gonna be down? It might need to be, how do you want us to handle that? You guys want us to do that? We need to put that back on there and.
I would say.
Put it back on the agenda so you guys can have it down to approve.
There's a tree on the corner of Persimmon and.
Then it will come back as old business, so you guys can get that down.
We'll get a, somebody to take a look at it, and, uh, well, it's coming on. If it's something, if something bad, it's endangering somebody, we need to get it fixed.
Yeah.
Get it looked at and fixed, yeah.
It might, I hit my lighting on one side.
Hard telling.
My time. Carpenter lamps, you know, it can do you a lot of things.
Okay, any other public comments?
I got one.
Uh, could you state your name, since I didn't have you do it first?
David King.
Okay.
Uh. How's all your inventory here in the building working out? Or you, do you just know what you've got? Out, uh, like inventory, like tools?
Actually, uh, me and him was discussing that the other day about doing inventory.
Inventory on stuff?
Notice things that we have paperwork for, but it's not in the shop, so.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is, I know there's stuff been here, then it ain't here no more. It's walking off or disappearing, stuff like that there in the past. I know there's, towns bought a lot of stuff and it ain't here no more. It's just, for some reason, it disappears.
We seen that yesterday.
What that stuff is?
We seen that yesterday. We seen a manual for a steel leaf blower, it's not here.
Uh, that's what I mean, air compressor, tools, I mean.
Echo weed eater, it's nowhere.
Chainsaws, everything just kinda walks off around here. That's what I'm saying, either take a picture of it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Inventory it, make sure you still got it.
Weed eater?
No, there's no.
I remember, there shouldn't be walkie-talkies around here. They're, I don't bet that you can't even find them.
So, that's an inventory list I'm excited for.
There's been a lot of stuff bought for the town that ain't here no more. It kinda walks away. I know there's been three or four sets of tools, and there's none.
Yeah, there probably no tools.
Over the years, yeah. But, uh. So, there's an inventory list, when we get it out.
There's a list, you'll, she'll have to get a hold of Peg and find out where that list is, cause her and Donald did the inventory.
Okay, good, yeah, go back to it.
If nothing else, take pictures of it with a phone, and I'll put them in a category by itself.
Serial numbers and.
Cause I know there's been stuff disappear, cause we bought it on the town board and it ain't here no more.
Yeah, weird.
You bought things on the town board.
That, and I got one other thing. Your city hall leaking.
Yeah.
Bad.
Yeah.
Is there any way you get up there and pour some tar out? Or has it got a rubber roof?
Driving some rubber.
Yeah, hold on.
Is it a rubber roof?
Um, I did talk to, the last time that was done has been over a year ago. It was fixed. In two thousand and seventeen, we had a company come in and fix it, and then, um, Brad and Donald have retard it twice, or tar, I don't remember what, but they.
Probably the problem is too many.
They checked with Linson, they checked with Linson gut, um, gutter, whatever that place is, seamless gutter, to find out what we needed to put on a flat roof. And they put that in, it only lasted about a year, so it's about time for it to do it again, but the next suggestion is that, um, they look, the board looks into a grant next to get a pitch put on the roof. But it's gonna be, need to be sealed before then by whatever that stuff, the tar or whatever.
I just wondered if you let it leak too long, the timber's gonna get rotten.
Yeah, we liable to have electrical fire too.
Last time we had, it rained.
That's about all I got to say.
We went back there and there was a horrendous mess.
Yeah.
And if we don't get that fixed, there's gonna be mold and everything, God, it's all.
Yeah.
Supposed to rain some more. About to rain season too. It's springtime.
But you can only, you can only put on so many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it's gonna have to be taken off.
Yeah.
And spend some major money, like Christine said.
Yeah.
Looking for grant money, and somebody needs to do some, I don't know who does that, do some legwork to try to find something.
Quickly.
Well, it's usually a board member and the mayor that looks into the grants.
Yeah.
Okay, is that all?
She may have a leak up here, and it may not come out to back here.
Till back here.
Oh, I'm telling you.
Yeah, flat roofs are nothing but.
It was a leak.
Yes, it was.
Formed.
It's, uh, dangerous. Electrical, you know, we can down electrical.
I just thought I'd bring it up.
Well, it's a good, in fact, John and Christine and I moved a lot of electrical copier and a lot of computer out of the way, so it wouldn't rain on it.
Yeah, that's not good.
It's a horrendous mess back there.
Plug-ins back here, it's.
Yeah.
Come down on, they put stuff over it.
That needs to be.
Couple of them quit working too, didn't they, Christine?
That needs to be.
Next, next thing on the.
Didn't want it to quit working, cause we're all ready to plug in some.
Well, the front door's not got that electrical outlet, but the shredder doesn't, we gotta move that out there.
That's really strange, isn't it?
And the furnace and the heater, space heater work on that outlet too.
That's weird, isn't it?
Uh, Christine, one more thing.
Yeah, could you stand and state your name for the record, please?
Miller and Oneback. Um, I know the fire department, we have been talking about it.
Uh-huh.
I'm not one to give Bill any more work.
Uh-huh.
But we're needing to make sure all the fire hydrants, that they can open and close properly. So, if we do, like, February last year, we had the fire right here, basically across the street. We need to make sure that all the fire plugs, when we would have a fire here in town, we hook up to it, are we gonna have water?
Is that something that, um, the water employee has done in coordination with someone from the fire department?
I don't know if they've done that with Donnie or not, in the past.
Does anyone know on the board?
Uh, you'd have to do something with the fire department, same, probably.
Yeah, the, the fire department, Steve has said that we might, we're trying to, here sometime, in order to get enough time, enough people to do so, it's go around ourselves and.
Flush them out and stuff, make sure they're.
Yeah, let, let, let them crack them open, that type of stuff, but I would, I still would like to, move the fact that.
Longer.
Give, give the city a heads up, we're gonna be flushing meters, so.
So, then someone can get in contact with Bill and let him know.
Well, it, it could.
What would it? We probably won't do it immediately because of the rain. Uh, right, okay.
Yeah, I, I know from living up in Bridgeport. Normally it does not happen, but it could happen, we're, if we're flushing meters, we could put the, accidentally, not meaning to do it on purpose, but put the city in a boil order situation.
Do you oil them anywhere, them hydrants? Do you oil them?
I don't think they will.
I don't think she did, right?
So, is Steve rigged a fire chief, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Then he'll need to get in contact with the town.
They got a grease spinning on?
I don't know if they do or not.
I don't believe.
You know, where you turn it on, is.
Yeah, they're, they're all, I.
You oil them, is, I don't know, I've never fooled them with one, you just open them up.
Everything's under the crown.
Yeah, it's gotta. He has a brass valve down under there.
Oh.
We can get with Steve and see what he says, and then by early spring, we can check them out, go around the village.
That's a good idea.
You, you're basically in town all the time, running down all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, they need to be worked once in a while, yeah.
I'll talk to Steve about it and.
Well, they used to do that, it seems like.
Yeah, they do, that's a good idea.
They did is, almost yearly, but.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Need my flushing them out, it'll help our water system in town too, move the water.
They do it in my car all the time.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll find out it's plugged.
Right.
Okay, is there any, anything else before we move on to old business? Okay, old business, we had carried over park improvements. I don't know if any, anything else has been done in regards to that, but.
Uh, we got a new light up there. Uh, I was wanting to talk with the board.
I do have that down under new business, about the light specifically.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, was there anything with parks?
Uh, no, not as of now.
It looks really nice up there, cause I sit on my back porch, I mean, it illuminates where it needs to.
Do you like that light?
I do, cause you know, that's, I'm just sitting back there, that's where we're making stuff in park.
Right, yeah.
You know, and, yeah.
Is it pretty bright?
It is, very bright, yeah.
We didn't think it was very bright, did we?
No, it.
Not, not for the area we was wanting, but.
Yeah.
Every light helps up there, since it's a big park.
Yeah, it looks really good where it's at.
It is, well, yeah.
There's, uh, even another light behind the shelter house also, cause it's so dark back there.
I thought they were gonna fix that, there's one back here.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Basketball for you, huh?
Yeah, and they have it unplugged.
Anybody say what's wrong with that one?
Yeah, we're gonna get.
We're getting ready to get to that.
We're trying to stay in order since I'm not, I'm not, that is a lot.
We're throwing our court.
That's the only thing I have on the park though.
Okay, um, the next old business was town attorney, and you guys had voted to hire Trevor as our new town attorney, and we did so. Um, so I'm gonna, if he has anything to say, I'm gonna go through his hand right now.
Well, I'm just happy to be here and help out. I, uh, looking forward to working with everyone and getting to know everybody and giving back to the community.
You might change your mind about that.
Yeah, maybe.
We're happy to have you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Scaring off on his foot, me.
Um, the shelter house, we all know that that's going on right now. I have a, um, a spreadsheet right here of what we've paid so far and what we have left to pay. Um. We've paid all of our materials, and we've paid three weeks of labor, and we have three more weeks of labor to come out, and we've, um, ordered that money up from our grant. Um, if anyone wants to see that, I kinda did that so you guys would have an idea of what was going on.
Is that gonna be mail or shingle?
It's shingle.
Shingle. It's gonna go back shingle?
It's gonna go back shingle, um. Stacy had some information about the, the light, the fans in the bathroom. Did you wanna tell the board, explain to the board what's been going on with that?
One of the fans in the bathroom doesn't work. Um, they're gonna hang them back up because in the grant, it don't, um, cover new lights or anything. So. You might wanna consider a new fan for the bathroom, one of these days.
Girls are in the right.
Um, could we not, could we just not have them put the outlet there and not put that fan in?
Don't put the fan in and just put the light switch, the light there?
You know, the, the wiring, and, and tie off the wiring where the fan would go, and then seal it up, and then at the time, later we can vote on it.
You can do that, but most of them set up in the thing.
They're reset, so we'd have to cut and reset.
So.
The bad thing is, we only have, they're, they're planning on being done by the end of the month, so the fire department can get in there and use it.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so if we waited to get something. Something bought and seeing if they would put that in.
Is it, is a, is a fan necessary in there? Are they necessary in the bathroom?
Depends on who goes in before you.
Well, that's true. But the way the doors are, you got plenty of airflow though, well, I mean.
Would Wes consider, would Wes consider putting new ones in if we would have them here and ready for them?
They'll put the new ones in.
So, if we.
As long as we have them, they'll put them in.
As the board, do you guys wanna take a vote on beckoning that purchase?
Think of motion it and take a look at it, if it draws.
You know what, I, I, here's what I, just my own gut, I think it's a waste of time. It's out there, it's bare, they're willing to put it in, buy, you're talking about a hundred bucks for less.
Two fans, yeah.
Get two of them. Yeah, the one in the men's room squeaked, Brad oilled it, but it's gonna go out eventually.
And that's what they said. The other one's not in the best shape either, but they did say that you could buy, um, a, a cheaper one for like fifty bucks.
That's what I was thinking, you can put them up at Menards and send them right in there.
Well, um.
I think it'd be good, just put new fans up there.
Okay, Thursday, I, I take them a check and we can talk to their foreman down there, or, um, uh, they've been talking to Stacy about that, cause she has a lot of construction knowledge. Um, so, whatever route you guys wanna go with that, she can talk to Dennis if she has time, or I can on Thursday when I pay them. And then we can see if we can get, you know, maybe we can look at Menards online too and see what they.
Right.
What they have. And the board can, you know, say, hey, we need to settle limit and go.
They have the electrical wire up now, so.
It needs to be sooner rather than.
But I mean, if they're willing to install it, that's it.
They will install it, and other than, rather than putting all the old ones back together.
Definitely, yeah.
Well, would you, um, we could even email Wes tonight, you know, as soon as tonight, and give them a heads up, it's up to you guys.
What's our deadline for getting those fans to you?
Sure.